Remote participation by bias. We ask that those of you who are not by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion moment to please get your microphone.
Thank you, Marshall. You are actually, it's repeating. So I don't know if you want to try to log off and log in again.
Hope us anything.
Yeah, we'll see if that works. Okay. So we're going to be going through the warrant today. And just to kind of set the timing here. So it's going to print to the jail on April 1st. So we literally have up until the day before, not that we want to push it, but to make sure that we have clean copies of both this warrant and the STM with all of our changes incorporated. And it voted, you know, that we accepted the articles into the warrant. But after today, we only have two more working sessions. And so I'm concerned that maybe we might need to add another working session because we have to finish this up. We still have verbiage that hasn't come into us. We have an article from the school that we haven't seen the verbiage to. And there will probably be things coming out of today that will be tweaked, et cetera. So I'd just like to put it out there if perhaps we would like to schedule something, maybe March 2nd as a work session to keep moving on this. We have a couple of options. We have March 2nd, we have March 9th, and I'd rather leave March 30th as a fail safe as the very last, you know, in case something comes up that we need to meet and meet earlier in the month to address it. Hi, Deb.
Sorry, you technically have three already on the books for March.
What's the third one?
The 30th is already booked.
Oh, you know what? The next page. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Okay.
I don't know, the 30th is really calling it close. If, if we want to move that third one up closer, you know, either the second or the ninth, that's just about the night before it has to go to the jail. So, but I'll throw it out there to see how people are feeling.
I've booked a few things around these dates in my calendar and adding or switching is going to be a bit of a challenge. I mean, we may very well be finished with this by the 30th. I know it's down to the minute, but it, I would prefer to keep the schedule that we have.
Okay. And, you know, I missed seeing that we had the 30th because I didn't look to the next page. I was thinking we only had two, which is why I kept thinking about this.
And I think the 30th then becomes the day that we actually put down as when we sign it and then send it in with that as the date that we reviewed it and signed it. It's appropriate to keep the 30th there.
Yeah, so we'll have to actually get into the town hall then, everybody on the 30th, just as you're making your arrangements, unless the signatures are going to be stamped. But I think we'd probably like our actual signatures on that page.
Yeah, but we have time the next day to sign it, so to speak, because it's the 31st and then the first that needs to go to, to, that's when it has to go out, right?
Right. So it just, it'll be on everyone's calendar that we have to get into the town hall either 30th or 31st, because the first, it will be going out, it will be driven there. So just make sure that everybody knows they have to go in to do that.
Anybody who doesn't get it in gets a stamp.
It's a stamp. That's the penalty. Okay. All right. So we've got a number of edits in here. Kevin, would, should we start just at the top and go through, see what has been added or changed?
Yeah, certainly. So what you have in front of you tonight is a combination of Member Gant and Chair Bermudas' edits that I received from the version 2.01. This is the 2.02. So it incorporates both. There's some pieces that on Mr. Gant's that I've, I made notes on the side before incorporating it, just so there was a little discussion, because it's a little change on standard language. I just want to make sure the full board has an opportunity to, to hear the change and highlight it for everybody to hear. But generally speaking, it's, it's, it shouldn't incorporate all those changes that were received.
Essentially, what you're saying is that, that there is a version two that I marked up and you're going to go through that markup in your discussions now? Or some of the markup you included, some of it, which is a typo, so to speak, you included, but something that's worthy of discussion you left out. Good. But we're going to discuss it now.
Or included it with a note on the side saying this is rep language again. So, yeah, so just on article, I made the changes at the top, Mascanomic Regional School High School Auditorium, which was requested at the last meeting. It's still in yellow because we did get a note today. We made the request three weeks ago to use the auditorium through the formal process that's allowed by us. Beth and I have been talking on a regular basis and today I got an email from Assistant Superintendent suggesting that we look to the summer and using the tents that Middleton and Boxer are planning to share, to which I responded, the plan is to be at the auditorium on May 2nd and we're planning to do so. Let me know if you have any questions. So it's still, we're still planning to do so at this time. And I would just mention as a quick aside, we did have a team meeting after our last work session, we discussed around indoors, outdoors. It's a 600-person seat auditorium. The warrant is not, at this time, anything that I would call controversial, relatively speaking, where it might drive hundreds of people to town meeting. So we think we can handle the space, but we're also planning a Plan B and C in the event that the world changes again and we find ourselves in a very bad place and what that might look like. But right now, all intents are to do it indoors at the auditorium, as we discussed at the last meeting, barring any change in the, in society, I guess is the best way to put
Book that date. So that date was held for us.
We put it in. I don't know, I was a little confused by the email, Madam Chair. I think, I don't know if it was just a miscommunication on their end that they thought we had requested to use the outdoor facilities like we had in the past, because that was the last two years what we requested. Last, two years ago, they accommodated, last year they did not. So I sent an email back just clarifying and Beth did as well to her person that she requested the space, saying the same, they kind of playing, like she wasn't necessarily in the know, but just saying, I just want to confirm this is, you know, we, this is for the auditorium on this date, et cetera. So more to come, but we're, I'm working right now and just making sure we have that as we requested a few weeks ago. Unless there's some major reason why we wouldn't, I'm confident we will. I think it was just a miscommunication. But for the warrant purposes, we're going with the auditorium as discussed.
And we need to get this straight too with the administration. They need to understand that this is important to us and they, we put this in as a request some three or four years, three years ago, maybe. So they know about that. It also includes the cafeteria for overflow. If in fact, we have too many people for the 600, then we use the cafeteria as Boxer, it has done a number of years. The second thing is to ensure that we also have available the fourth in the event that we do not complete all our business in the first night. That's always been the case and that is also the request that we have to the school. So if we could just make sure that those things are in place, it would be very embarrassing, I think for the school and for us, I guess, because we didn't check enough times, but if, in fact, that's a problem. Next.
Kevin, let me just ask you, were they saying that they have some COVID concerns? I mean, because they did book it for us on both, as Dick mentioned, both of those dates we had put in. So were they just saying at this point in time with COVID, we're not comfortable moving forward? You guys going into the auditorium?
So it was Assistant Superintendent's email had no reference of COVID. It just, it sounded like he'd had conversations with the other two communities in our, in our area that takes advantage of Boxer and Middleton. Sounds like they were coordinating. He was either giving us a heads up that there's, that these other communities have been talking about doing something, sharing a tent of some sort. Or he was just, he got bad information and.
So you had just cleared up with him?
We're working through it. I, it should be, I don't, I know they're both on vacation this week, so early next week I'll be on the phone with them if I don't get an email back in the meantime.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So Article 2, it looks like we have some updates there.
Yeah.
The only thing that I would mention is that total would just need to be updated to reflect the addition of the 50,000.
Oh, yeah. No, these are all placeholder numbers from last year. So this will be in its entirety updated in the next version, once we plug the numbers in. What those represent to the two additional columns, what we do is we have different accounts outside the general operating budget, which are used to offset our operating budget. Historically, it's the PEG, it's the Conservation Commission, and it's the fund balance reserved to reduce future excludable debt. And in this case, we've added the cemetery revolving account and the cemetery perpetual care fund. And I know I spoke with everyone individually on sort of the plan that we've been working on, which is on the cemetery where we were asking for the additional FTE in the operating budget, which would come at about $74,000 cost to the town if we move forward with it. And I know we talked about the fact that that's a big ask and we knew there was a need, but we wanted to think creatively. We worked with a vendor who does other municipal cemeteries. They outsourced a third party of sorts who does this as their business. They gave us a ballpark verbally and then they, they looked onsite with our team to see what the project looked like. And we had a final number that was presented to us that's less than $50,000. What that means is that we no longer need that FTE ask, so that's coming out of the budget request. And what we're asking for is we're, we're looking at south of $50,000. We're just fine tuning exactly, exact scope that Gary feels comfortable with, because we have a per mowing and weed whipping cost. It's $2,700 per time. We're seeing if we need to add an extra one or two, but the cost would be less than $50,000. And so what we have here is the budget offsets out of the two existing cemetery accounts that can be used for professional services in the cemetery to offset that increase in the budget, which would be that $48,000, $49,000 cost that we're anticipating for the cemetery outsourcing. So the, the general, general operating budget does not, it increases, but then there's the offset so that it's a net zero impact to the budget at the end of the day. Very grateful for the team's work, Gary Wilds, Travis Good and others. It's a very creative way to solve a great need. And those hours now that we, our team were spending in the cemetery can be used outside the cemetery for the ball fields, the common and other needs that we might have. And so we feel very confident that we've come a long way in solving the issues around the hours that are needed there.
You said something in the midst of all of that discussion. It sounded to me like $2,700 a ton or something. What, what is this?
Per, per, so what they priced out was every 10 days doing a mowing and a weed whipping. And so basically, they would come, they'd spend whatever time it takes, half a day, take care of the work and leave. And the cost to the town per visit is $2,700. The initial estimate gave us a number of visits that they thought was appropriate to do, the every 10 days. Gary and Travis thought there might be additional need at the top and the, and the end of the season as well, that they might look at to, and the cost might go up slightly greater than that. So they gave us a total cost, but then they broke that total cost into per visit cost. So we can, we know exactly what the cost would be if we added one or two additional trips.
Is that like all day Kevin to mow? Like the $100 of?
It, it's, it's a, it's a really, if, if, we had our part-time help in there, which were two full-time people during the summer hours. And we also had our, probably one and a half guys on a given day in there. So you're looking at three and a half people all day, every day in the cemetery to do this work last year. In this case, we're, how many people they want to put on it is fine with us. They want to bring a dozen people and be done within a couple hours. If they want to bring five people and spend most of the day, it's up to them how they want to allocate the resources. But bottom line is they'll deliver as good, potentially better product at the end of the day and it will allow us to free up some resources and not look for additional ask in the operating budget.
They use our equipment?
Nope. They'll use their own equipment.
Okay.
And this will also mean that we will no longer be needing the summer help, which this year's a transition year, as our two summer help have graduated onto other things. Gary said they were very reliable and good workers, but that's not always the case. So this will allow us to have some consistency as well.
How much did we pay for the summer help? What was the budget for that?
It'll shade more than $25,000.
Okay.
So those numbers will all get tightened up, all of them, including the new ones that we added. And those at the next, my hope is by early next week, I'll have all that tightened up and we'll have that updated and hopefully not highlighted anymore if we have good numbers to share. So.
What you're saying is, what you're saying is the cemetery budget that we see, park cemetery budget will show $25,000 less in wages because we're not going to hire those two people.
So the two people who are being pulled out of the, they're not in the operating budget, the two people are, were being paid out of the revolving fund in the cemetery.
Okay.
So in the operating budget right now, in the over asking, it shows $49,000 plus $25,000 in benefits. That ask is going to be reduced to 50, $48,000, whatever the number is that we officially land on and what the expected, expected cost will be. And that will be the over asking with the offset here in Article 2 to cover that cost. So it, the money's in perpetual care and revolving come in, into the operating budget to offset the cost.
Okay.
It's exciting. I, I, I'm very proud of the team for the work. A lot of really long days and nights from time to time over the last few weeks to try to get this down. I don't think the FTE felt right for anybody and, but we knew there was a need and I feel like we've addressed it with a very minimal impact overall.
Well, I, I feel good about the revolving fund at 25K, which is essentially a replacement of the part-time people that we would have hired anyway. As far as the other $25,000, we need to find a way that we're going to reduce some other costs to make up for that $25,000 in my mind. There's no free lunch.
That's, that's the perpetual care fund.
I understand it's professional care fund, but it's money that we're spending to do the kinds of things that we've done in the past. Therefore, we're not expanding government, we're not adding people, so to speak. So we need to find a way, in my mind, to remove that $25,000 from something else so that we are balanced.
So with the perpetual care fund, I appreciate that, Mr. Gant. The perpetual care fund historically has been used for miscellaneous expenses to upkeep the cemetery. Those expenses will no longer be necessary because those expenses will be incurred by the new vendor. In addition to that, you know, sometimes they would use it for part of a capital purchase, like 20% of a, of a pickup truck or something like that. And so the idea here is that, because we're no longer using that equipment nearly as often in the cemetery, there's going to be times when the pickup truck needs, or the one time needs to be in the cemetery for one thing or another, but the intent is that those, that will not be a need in that as well. So there's an, hopefully an offset to that in some extent. And then the, the, the last piece of that is the perpetual care fund, since its inception has earned, it's yielded 3.08%. Last year it yielded 4.58%. And so coming in at 25 or maybe even a little bit less than 25 in that account, we feel confident that we'll be able to continue to grow the perpetual care fund like we have historically, because $25,000, if it's on, on balance over the last five years, is roughly, might be a little bit less actually than what's been pulled out of the perpetual care fund for other needs that we will no longer need to pull from with the outsourcing.
This also addresses the issue of that third person. You said three people were needed to do the mowing over at the cemetery. So that third person now is freed up to address the things that Gary and his team have identified as not being done sufficiently in the past. So this is kind of a creative way to address those additional activities that need to be done to bring it back up to the level that we think should be the standard for town in the town.
And the really great thing about this too is it's, 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 we're, it's a one-year test run, to be honest with everybody. I mean, we, we want to see how it works, we want to see what the product looks like. Because we're not, because of the offset, there's no impact onto the budget. And if in a year's time, we find that this was not successful and we feel it will be, we're very confident, we've seen their work in other communities, I've spoken with the town administrators and town managers in the communities where they've worked, and they've said it's worked really very well. We still sort of have, as I said, a parachute if we need it. So it's without going for an FTE where we have somebody and we, we own them. And then if it doesn't work, what do we do? We have a, an outsource option where it's an annual contract, it's year over year. So we have some opportunities and flexibility in the future, which is something we like as well. So anyways.
Thanks. Let's move on, because we're at 522 and we're on the first item.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is really creative thinking, in my opinion, and, and I'm going to depend on Kevin and Catherine and, and Gary to figure out how to make it work and, and I, I'm confident that they will.
Thank you, boy.
A small request, I've asked it before, I mentioned it to Catherine also, on this second, this item that is Article 2, that we work it out such that there are no pennies involved in it. And we're going to do that very easily. Some of them you can't do it with because it's the actual pennies that we're taking out of something or other. But for example, a conservation commission can easily be $10,033, or 10,033 cents. And then at the bottom, it comes out even such that when we bring it forward to the next article, it's much cleaner for people to see and understand.
You have that note, you just haven't updated it at all until you have the actual numbers, right? That's why I'm still sitting there with pennies.
And I did take on the 322, which in the last year's warrant article had some change associated. We were closing out an account and that's part of the reason there was some change. I, on this version, I deleted all the pennies, except for the total, but I deleted the pennies as a reminder that we're doing whole numbers. So that, that will be case. And it, at the very least, for closing out accounts, we'll offset it, like you said, Mr. Gant, with an extra 67 cents to make it a full dollar amount at the bottom.
Yeah. And it's, so I would, I would also say that if you're going to do it, then you're going to put in a couple of dollars so that it comes out to be a $10 even amount. And just keep it even, it's easier for people to see and deal with, it's not a big deal. But it's easy to do.
Absolutely.
Moving on, it doesn't look like there are any updates to Article 3, 4, 5.
The one thing on 3 that we haven't seen, it says attachment A here. Can we see that format with the percentages in it? Can we get that out to us? We don't, we don't need it today, but we should, we should begin to see that, that format that we're going to use.
So I know that Catherine typically, it's the same format we've used in the past. I know there was a discussion that we talked about with providing a percentage. I have my notes on where we landed on that. I know we went back and forth with different concepts.
The difference was whether it's going to be percent or percent in dollars, both. I, I don't, at least the percent, I think, we all agreed on that. That wasn't the problem. The question is, were we going to put in amounts too? I'll, I'll discuss that with anybody what they want, but let's see what the format is. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
I think he presented them before. We just don't have it in this attachment. So Catherine presented the two options. I don't think we made a decision which of those that we wanted, so we should get closure on that.
Okay. But that, those formats are the ones that we're going to use? There's no difference? I don't know. I remember seeing them, I didn't think they were, it was just a general sense. Okay. Good. We'll work with those.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have, based on the input we received prior meeting, we'll look back at some of the, the notes and we'll, we'll create a document as we move forward that provides that as, as we go. But we won't, we won't vary from what we've talked about, it's sort of a different option, that's for sure.
Okay. Can I just ask on Mascanomit, is there any new information as to how we're going to be handling the returned borrowing amount?
Well, that's a little bit later, Dick.
Not worth to discuss now, you can say no, but if there is, and I haven't spent a lot of time on the wording here, and I don't know if it'll fit into this wording, if we have to put it in, or if it's all different.
That's actually what, Article 30 something? It's, it's much later in the document.
Oh, the handling of that? I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's right, it is much later. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions up until Article 9? I just had one question on that relative to the, the 5% increase. Any questions on anything prior to Article 9? Nope. Okay. Kevin, we still have the old 20,500 in there and I know they asked for a 5% increase. Do you have any additional information as to why they're asking for it or what the other towns were doing? Kind of started that discussion last, last week?
So Middleton is at 29,925. Boxford's at 31,095. I think we talked about last meeting. I'm pulling up Meredith's email right now. I asked her the, the Madam Chair sent over specific questions and I sent that over to Meredith. Just bear with me for one second, I, I will read exactly. So the response I received is the increase is due to the program's expanding, adding more staff hours to meet program and resource needs and increase in cost overall. Our forecasted expenses for fiscal year '22, when compared to fiscal year 2016, actual expenses have increased about 24%. Please let me know.
In one year? In one year, I'm sorry, you just said in one year they went up 24%?
From 2016.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that.
2000 and now, 22, this current fiscal year, it's a 24% increase. And I think the 16 represents when the 20,500 became the, the number.
We find out, Kevin, these numbers from Middleton and Boxford, were they increasing from last year to this year? Was everybody asked for a 5% increase? Or I think that question was, are we catching up because we're pretty far behind the other towns?
So I know Middle, I believe Middleton is going up. I think they might have, I don't know if it's, I briefly talked with Andy on it, we were talking about other things. I haven't been able to connect with Matt around the 31 and, and why their number's the number if they're increasing over year.
Probably Meredith would be able to tell you if you can't reach the towns, she'll know if they're going up. Yes, she would ask them.
Yeah. No, I, I can certainly ask that specific question as well, if you'd like. So is there, I, for the purposes of the draft, do you want me to include the increase now? Or do you want me to hold off?
I'd hold off, I see, because we may change the amount based on what we hear. That would be my suggestion. Don't, don't put any more changes in here and then change again.
The 29,000, 31,000, those reflect Middleton and Boxford with the increase? Is that correct?
That's a fiscal 23 numbers, as I understood it.
But I think the open question is, we don't know if that was also their fiscal 22 number. We don't know if they went up 5%.
We don't know the history of what they've done, right?
Yeah. So we'll just get that history to make a decision. Personally, I don't think it's a huge increase, considering that we have not increased it for the, the last seven years and we are less than the other two towns, but it would be able, it, it's good to get that other information, so we're making a informed decision.
And we'll run a number based on population, because we're going to get a question one way or the other about that, just so we have an idea. And it doesn't have to be perfect, but if we have an idea of what it is, so we can explain it, yeah.
Do you, would you want, is it helpful if I put on the agenda for Monday's meeting to have Meredith come and make the formal ask for board?
Nope, nope.
No, I, that's okay, Kevin. I think if we just get the history, we're probably good.
Okay.
Yeah. Did someone else have a question? Okay. So jumping ahead, I don't see any changes up until Article 14. Are there any questions on anything prior to Article 14?
I have just a very small knit in the, in 13. In the explanation, it ends with general operating budget. It's not necessary, but I think it'd be nice to just add in Article 3. Some people don't understand that the general operating budget is what they just voted on, so to speak. So I think if you just say in Article 3, it'd be nice.
In Article 3, in Article 3, give a proper.
I think it's 3.
General operating budget in Article 3.
Okay. If everyone's comfortable that, I'll accept that change. I made it and I'll accept it on the next version.
I'm fine with that. We do that at different times throughout the document.
Okay. All right. In Article 3. Okay. Let me just make one little. And this version, I'm, we're going to go through a lot of acceptance. I'm going to, I'm going to number it. 2022 ATM warrant, version 3.01 with an updated date. So that's what I'll be making these changes on, based on accepting what we talked about.
You just accept them all as a version, right?
Perfect. So I'm going to retitle the version I'm working off of now, because this will be the one that we, we hold up.
Okay. In the meantime, Article 14, did any board members have any questions or comments on Okay, in the meantime, Article Fourteenth, did, um, any board members have any questions or comments on the edits?
On the warrant part, um, I, I'm going to suggest we add and trade in or sell a, whatever year it happens to be, two thousand seventeen, four, whatever one we're choosing to replace, so it's very clear. And then, of course, the same thing in the motion that would be made by the, um, FinCom.
I, I, I know last year we talked a little bit about the potential of reusing one of the vehicles, because the trade-in value is very minimal for the town. And we currently do fifty-five cents a mile for some of our staff here at Town Hall. Um, and one of the ideas is, once we get the fleet, we have a vehicle that we might be able to use for our, um, a pool car for the town who, who needs, needing a vehicle for work purposes. Um, I think we might be able to save some money doing that, um, rather than reimbursing people for their time in their vehicles, their personal vehicles. Um, I talked with Chief a little bit about that today. I did not reference specifically retiring an old vehicle, or not, and when that will be available, we did talk again about that opportunity when it does present itself. So I would just, because Chiefs reviewed this language, I, I would certainly want to have that discussion again with Chief, if he anticipates needing to continue to have that vehicle, if he plans to provide it for town employees, or if he plans to trade that vehicle in.
The Chief, the Chief doesn't make that decision. If he, I mean, if he, if he wants it for an additional vehicle or something, that's one thing. But as to how the town deals with it, that's up to the town.
Understood, yes, yeah, my, I said his intention, because we've been talking about this for a year, and I want to understand what his intention on his fleet and retirement. If he, if he does need it.
The town meeting would like to know what his intention is, okay.
It would be, it would be.
Find out what his intention, all right.
Um, Kevin, it would be the SUV, right? Because that's what the fleet is, other than the new electric vehicle, so it's an SUV. So if he could, and I think if we, if, if we decide that we'd like to keep that car, and it, it makes sense financially, we should have a cost analysis that says, this is what the trade-in is, this is what we're spending right now in reimbursing people for using their own vehicles. And so it either makes sense to trade it in or to keep it because it's less money. You know, we still have then the maintenance of that truck, uh, to take care of, we're paying for the gas. Um, so it'd have to be a cost benefit, and I'm sure Chief has gone through that in his head to figure out which is more economical.
Um, yes, I mean, we, we haven't had the full discussion whether or not this is the year that we're gonna look to do that. There's a number of steps I want to take around, relative to discussing with the team. I mean, they need to make, I want to make sure people are gonna drive it if we, if we, if we take it and, and use it. I also want to make sure that Chief's fleet, like I said, is, is where he needs it to be, because we talked about this last year, the trade-in is just, it's, um, there's greater value to us to having, um, a, a available vehicle potentially at the police department than to trade that vehicle in, even with the insurances and, and the cost, the other costs that come along with it. But I'll reach out to Chief as soon as possible, and we'll have that conversation, if we're looking to. The wording's the same as it has been year over year, so the intent was that if we purchased the vehicle, we'd have some flexibility, but if we want to drill down on the trade-in specifically, that's fine. I just want to make sure I have that chance to talk to Chief before we incorporate that language.
All right, so we'll circle back on this one once we have more information, um, to make an analysis. Okay, um, Article Fifteenth.
So, so on, on fourteen here, though, uh, we do have some problems perhaps with the explanation. It does say, uh, to the extent of, uh, financial analysis showing savings with fuel and energy use. Um, that, that's pretty broad, and I don't think, um, I, I can agree with that, but, uh, I'm open to where this all comes from.
Is, is that mark deleted?
What's that?
No.
It's still in there.
One of the things I was asked at the last meeting was to give a purpose of why we purchased the EV, um, and went to a different direction, and part of that was the financial analysis that we, and the fact that we are using less fuel and the cost of that fuel, whether it's electricity or actual gas, is, that's, that's accurate. Um, and the cost for the maintenance of the vehicle.
Financial analysis that we talked about was a break even, that was a break even, as you remember before, we, we reminded everybody that the cost of electricity was now fifteen cents, it was twenty-one cents. At any rate, the financial analysis at that time was a break even, so I'm not sure where we're, it says showing, so that would indicate to me that this is something that we have as numbers that we can look at. And I'm very interested in seeing those numbers, because based on the numbers that I worked with, with the Chief back, uh, in December, I guess it was, we had numbers from the first of October to the ninth of December. They were very sketchy numbers because he was not able to use it a whole lot. Uh, we know, or I know a lot more about, uh, the cost of operating the vehicle, especially in cold weather, and it's indeed the Chief indicated that he was having some troubles with that. So if we're gonna put something about financial showing, not, the history I know, we all know that, but this is indicate we're showing, then we better be able to produce the numbers. And I am delighted to go through and understand those numbers, but anybody who's willing to do it, the last. Now, I do know, and I've learned, that the vehicle does keep some very interesting statistics that have not been discussed, but I would, I think that they might be extremely helpful to us, uh, in understanding just how much electricity we're using, because we didn't know, because we don't have a meter, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, in summary, I'm very concerned about those words, and I would not, uh, really want to accept that. Another quick one, though, uh.
Can we pause on that for a second, Dick, just to, to address that before we move on? Um, one, um, recommendation I would make is saying showing projected savings, because that is the reason we went with it, we thought it was going to save us fuel over a period of time. And I think the break even was like two and a half years, so it, it would be, uh, showing a net savings over the remaining years. So if we put projected, then that ties in with the end, that we are not yet making our decision, because we have to actually see the actuals. But we do have projected numbers.
And those projections, exact, projections actually, um, on the fuel and the maintenance, not only were the projections showing reduced costs, but they've, in reality, been a reduced expenditure for the, the vehicle. So, um, I'm fine with that change, Madam Chair, I think it's a good change with the projection, we can add that language in, absolutely.
Dick, would that make you comfortable, if we're saying that this is what the analysis projected, and now we actually have to get the actuals before we make another decision?
Or considered fairly squirrely.
Well, I mean, why did we make the decision?
There was a straight-up projection, that project still exists, why is it squirrely?
Um, very, very, very squirrely.
But how so?
Right now, if we can, I'm, I'm delighted to go back and look now, which, the idea was we would have lots of data, and I'm delighted to go look at that data, and delighted if we can put down some real information here. But, uh, I'm afraid that we're not interested in finding that data, because we may not like the results. But we should be looking.
Well, no, 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 no. Hold on, Dick, you can't say that, I mean, that, 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 that is putting out into the world that this is, is some sort of conspiracy or what have you. We don't, don't want to see data, because we're, we're not gonna like the results, irresponsible to say that.
Okay, we, we do have some problems with this, uh, whole vehicle, and in, in part, uh, perhaps, uh, understanding the, the credibility of what, uh, might be being said. Uh, as, as we probably know, there was a, uh, Channel Five interview and video with this, and the information provided in there, uh, is not, uh, correct, and I'm, I'm very disappointed. I'm, I'm not sure how, how we corrected, usually if you have a mistake in the newspaper, the next day you have the place where you indicate, uh, that you had a typo error, or you made an error in what you put down. So we have an error, you say, what, what is the kinds of errors? If nothing else, uh, it was patently explained that there is no antifreeze in this vehicle. This vehicle, the Mustang, that is, certainly does have antifreeze. It is used for heating the cabin, and it's used for heating the batteries. It's, this is not an option, you, it's part of the car, but the people have told the public, the town of Topsfield Police Department told the public that it does not have antifreeze. It also indicated that the mileage that they get is two twenty, the Ford part is two eleven, go ahead.
Nick, I, I gotta interrupt here, because this, this whole discussion is coming about because you didn't want to buy the car. You don't want the car, you don't want the second car, and the rest of us are reasonably comfortable with proceeding here and moving forward. I, I, I think we ought to end the conversation, because it's just gonna go on and on and on. You and I have talked about this.
End it, okay, okay, end it, if I could just.
Dick, could I just ask you one question? What, what was the interview or the article that you were referring to? I'm not familiar with it.
I'll send you a link.
Okay.
Channel Fox showed up. And they did a, um, a, maybe a minute and a half, maybe a minute segment on the new EV, um, which Chief and Captain Bell were incorporated into that, that, that clip. It's a very positive story for the town, um, and it, it talked about some of the details regarding, uh, the vehicle as well.
Just a quick change, it says that, uh, it indicates that it was purchased by the Topsfield Police Department, it was purchased by the town. So just change Police Department to Town purchased the fully electric.
Uh, okay, let me see if I can catch up, so compared to the, in two thousand, the Topsfield Police Department purchased, so you would like to change Topsfield Police Department to Town?
The Town purchased it, yeah, not the Police Department, and if nothing else, it's a warrant article, it's not even in his budget, so to speak. But it is the Town that does the purchasing. Okay.
I think in the prior article, the reason that was there is because it, maybe it didn't, I, I, I'll, I'll hold comment on that, that's fine. How is the, uh, so generally speaking on the language, the hope is they accept as much as we can tonight, so we can keep the, the, the versions moving. Is however resulted in additional electric vehicle options arriving in the market, the financial analysis showing projected savings with fuel, energy use, and maintenance costs of electric vehicles compared to traditional combustion engines. Pause, in two thousand one, the Town, I'll change the Town if everybody's comfortable with that.
Yep.
Um, and then I'll.
But that's all right, I'm not comfortable with it, but that's, that's fine, as, as, uh, Boyd said, we need to move on.
Is the rest of the language acceptable if I, except for the, for the rest of the group?
Yeah, and then I think we just circle back to it about the trade-in analysis, you know, and see what that, uh, results. But just for the purposes of anybody watching this, um, I am completely open to either going in either direction, electric or with the SUV, depending on what the data tells us. So I think a decision is not made in my head personally, um, that's why we're waiting this period of time. I think that's why Kevin and Chief are waiting as well and put the verbiage in, we're not ready to make a decision yet.
That's absolutely correct.
By the way, I, I do have some numbers based on that discussion, I think I passed them out to everybody, based on the experience that we had from October first to December ninth, which was the time that it was used as a cruiser, before that it wasn't used as a cruiser, but I, I passed that out to everybody, so you have that. But if, if we can get more, excellent, that would be great, but that one indicates some concerns, yes, okay. There are a lot of assumptions had to be made in that, because we did not have great data as far as, yeah, we made some assumptions in that. I'm glad to go further and get more, thank you, Lynn.
Okay, um, Article Fifteenth.
So Article Fifteen, uh, I, I have no problem with the, the, uh, the explanation is just crazy. It, uh, it's like repeated and all. He, here's the way I would see it to read, use the first sentence that's there, and then, uh, so this is the police radio, and then I would tend to take everything else out and say simply, uh, oh, I guess I had it a little different, in the future, too, oh, I'm sorry. It says, uh, this is the next part of a multi-year program, and then it also says this is the third part. If we can all agree that it's the third part, I, I had changed it to next part, because there was discussions and arguments about whether this was the third part or not. If we can agree that the third part is all right, then I would have as the second sentence after the word encryption, the first sentence, then it would start, this is the third part of a multi-year program to update the department's, uh, department's in-vehicle radios. And then the last sentence says, in the future, two more radios will be required to complete this program, period. Rather than trying to talk about which years we bought one, I, I, I think, again, we, yeah, tightening it up, I think is well worth it. So the three sentences.
Then, could you send that to Kevin, Dick, so that he's got?
I, I can, but, but he, but just so we all agree as to what it is, essentially, I'm taking what is the first sentence, what is the third sentence, and that is, this is the third part, and adding one last sentence, in the future, two more radios, that's the concept, and if that's okay, I will send it to you.
If I could ask a clarifying question, so I used the version that you sent over to me, Mr. Gant, and copied it in directly into what I believe was word to word, word for word in the last version you sent me, is this a further, is this a further, uh, modification beyond what you sent me?
I see, okay, this is where you've, you, you said you've added in what I put in and things like that. I, 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 I thought that this is, I understand now what, what you're doing, you were putting in my wording.
I, I just copied it and plugged it in, because I wanted to get, make sure it was accurate.
I, I, that's, that's why it's repeated, I think there's another place where there's a repeat. Yeah, th- this would be a, a modification of mine to keep it, uh, I, I thought you were saying that third part was all right.
So my, my.
Conceptually, um, I am fine with what you just said, Dick, because it's just tweaking the language, it's not changing the concept. Everyone else fine with it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll send that.
And then, Dick, if you can send it over to Kevin.
I apologize, I didn't, I didn't understand why it was such a repeat, not it.
Okay, um, Article Sixteenth, um, any changes to the edits that were made?
Wait, I'll have to figure out. We, yeah. So, uh, I apologize, like, give, give me just a minute, because I'm gonna do it based on just my changes. Oh, yeah, I think, uh, in the explanation, this is not a technical piece, in the explanation, but for people to understand it, instead of tri-town, uh, union, school district, all that, this article would allow the school committee to begin a three-year program, these are the people that they think of, to begin a three-year program, uh, oh, so, let me see, I'm gonna, these are all my changes? Wait a second, wait, oh, yeah, 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 okay, okay. I did make some changes here, um, and I think what happened is you, you did go to, uh, back to Greenberg or somebody to get this wording?
Yeah, it's a combination, so after my last, uh, one was sent out, I received further clarification that we talked about, about what the type of material we would be using with.
Great, great, okay, so I, I kind of figured that that's what it was, and, and he doesn't have the kind of details that we might otherwise put in, but that's great. So here's the way I would have it read, uh, again, uh, this article will allow the school committee to begin a three-year program to replace the vinyl composite tile flooring, which has, which have, which, uh, under floor, floorings, which have deteriorated in the classrooms, hallways, and offices at Stewart and Proctor Schools with luxury vinyl tile and nylon powerboard carpet in certain areas, period. I, I, now I.
Are we replacing it with luxury? Are we replacing the tiles with luxury tiles?
I would, yeah, yeah, so, so on that, on that, uh, there's no way, there's no way that we're gonna put down.
It sounds better than it is, doesn't it, Kevin?
Capital V and capital T, they, I have made them lowercase luxury vinyl tile. It, it's probably a, a trade something or other, but, uh, uh, that's what they said, and that's what we'll put in. But like, like vinyl composite tile isn't capitalized, no luxury vinyl tile be capitalized. Um, that, that, that's my suggestion, to, to try to clean it up and make it easier.
Okay, again, I would say if you could send Kevin, because it just sounds like it's minor tweaking, if no one has a concern, then the concept that Dick is proposing, which is really just moving the words around a little bit to, to make it easier to understand, then, uh, I'm fine with Dick sending that over and us moving on to the next one.
Are we comfortable with the changes in the first and second section?
Yeah.
The most, the description about that?
Yes, uh, uh, ju- just a, a, Ned, I don't think in the warrant part, that the VT, VCT needs to be included in that. You see, you see, at one point, it, it says vinyl tile, but you don't have to put VCT in there, the vinyl tile floors.
I think that's part of the section you're changing anyway, uh, Dick, right?
This is in the warrant, this is not in the explanation, it's in, it's in the first, first section, and it's just a, it's just.
He crossed, he crossed it out.
Yeah, I don't see it there.
All right, nevermind.
It reads Topsail School Committee.
Yeah, it's deleted.
That's because it's different.
It's out.
I, I can't look at two people's changes at the same time. We can't tell which is mine and which is not. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem. All right, so you just send that, uh, third explanation section to Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, Article 17th. Um, I only had one suggestion here and that was to add back in actually the words trade-in or sale value, um, so that they actually know we are trading it in or selling it. So, um, I don't, I don't know, maybe Dick took it out or, you know, because both our changes were coming in at the same time, Kevin. So I apologize if we're undoing what the other has done.
Lynn, I don't know if it was good or bad. I had yours first and then I incorporated Mr. Gant's after. So I, um, whatever the preference of the board is, I have no problem making that change back. It's acceptable. I, I, I do like the trading because that's very specific too.
I, I thought that that was, I'm sorry, I meant to compliment. I thought the way it was fixed here is, is excellent. It tells how much it costs, 53. It tells, uh, what, what the trade-in value is and what the net cost is. It, it can't be clearer in my mind. I thought it was.
Other than putting back in the words trade-in or sale value, I think.
Oh, 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 I see what you're only talking about that particular part.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, sure. That's, that's fine too, whichever way. Okay, but, but having it written that way was excellent. And it's the same thing in the next article.
The write-up is clear. The write-up is clear in my opinion.
So, um, same for the 18th then, Kevin, just.
Yeah.
And put in trade-in or sale value.
All right, so I'm gonna accept all changes and I'm just gonna add trade-in back in to that one section.
Trade-in or, or sale? Trade-in or sale, that, those words?
You want it for sale, the entirety? I can do that.
That's the way we've done it in the past.
Instead of value, trade in or sell. I'm sorry, I, I, it's much clearer to leave it the way it normally is, yes.
Okay, so I just made the change. I'm gonna accept everything else. The highlighted part, it was new language that we have in the netting component of it. And it sounds like everyone likes that language, so I'll un-highlight that as well.
That's good. Okay, um, Article 19th, again, I had just one word twice that I would switch. It says that we're going, this is in the first paragraph. It says we're going to purchase and equip heavy duty and light duty vehicle lifts at the DPW facility. We're not gonna purchase it at the facility. We're gonna purchase it for the DPW facility. That, that's the only thing. And it appears in the second paragraph too, where it says at the DPW. I would say for the DPW. That was my only change.
Yeah, that's good, good catch.
So.
I changed the name and highlighted DPW facility because I know that, uh, at one point it was highway. Uh, but the building, I believe, is, is referred to as, on the sign entering, it's the DPW facility. Um, so I know, Mr. Gant, you had a different wording that you suggested.
Got it. Yep, that's okay. I understand. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, just want to make sure that, that works.
But I, I think the important thing was to let people know where this stuff was going. You know, the JP, the highway, garage, DPW, as long as they have, they understand what they're buying it for. And, uh, so I, I have a request to change and I actually, I would just talk to Gary about it. Uh, to better describe that lift, this is in the explanation. A three-year-old heavy-duty vehicle lift parenthesis by wheels, close parenthesis. The, the issue here is we're gonna get into that at some point discussion, I'm, I'm afraid, hopefully not if we explain it right, as to what the differences between these two are. One is heavy lift, one is light, but one is done by wheel and the other is done by the, so, so if, if you could move that, the wheel, it says wheel lift and instead, and I'll send you this, and instead make it lift by wheel and have that in parentheses, I think it would be clearer. Lastly, uh, at the end, uh, the, the, the last line begins at the word for. That four should come out. So it should say two lifts will allow the town to, instead of for the town to better. You see the four?
Where are you, Dick?
Yeah.
The, the, uh, last line, uh, starts out with for the town. And it should simply say the town, not for the town.
I don't see the last line anywhere saying for the town.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
Together, these two lifts will allow for the town, or in this case, allow the town to better service our vehicles.
Oh, got it. Oh, okay.
You got it, okay? I'm sorry, good.
Yeah.
Together, these two lifts, yeah. Will allow the town, yep, that makes sense.
So it's, I just want to make sure I have this, I'm gonna accept the changes because it seems simple enough, Mr. Gant, you don't, you don't want to. Says, uh, the first line, 23-year-old heavy-duty vehicle lift parentheses by wheel and parentheses comma, which is.
Yep.
Rest, rest of the, okay, got that. I'm gonna accept that now.
And then the four out. Yep.
So I'm putting them in at the top and you're taking them out at the bottom, Dick.
Uh, I, I, I think that trying to describe these lifts by wheel or by frame is, is over the top in my opinion. Uh, uh, most people aren't gonna understand what we're doing. They aren't gonna care what we're doing. We're buying two different sized lifts to handle two different sized vehicles. Period.
I might agree with Boyd on this because the second one, the light duty lift, we don't describe with any additional. I, I think you're right, even by wheel, I wouldn't know what that means because I'm not as familiar with the equipment. So I am, I think heavy-duty vehicle lift and light duty lift. Right, yeah.
The only, you know, the only way that that by wheel makes any sense is if you continue to read through where it says versus wheels, you get the idea. You know, when it talks about the other lift, it says by undercarriage or by frame, I can't remember what. It's undercarriage, I guess it says. And then it says versus wheels. So that's.
Oh, I see. This actually lifts them by the wheels. The other one doesn't. It lifts them by the underbody.
That's right. That's right.
Right.
I don't really care.
I just, I, I, yeah, it'd be, you're absolutely right. Uh, the, 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 the two lifts are two different kinds and they do different jobs. But to try to define all of that in an article like this is folly, in my opinion, because you're talking to hundreds of people that don't have any clue what you're talking about.
And actually, the number of words involved here is probably a half a dozen. By wheels versus wheels and undercarriage or the undercarriage. It's about six, six additional words in there. So it's not a lot of additional information.
Yeah, but more words to make things clear. It, you know, I, I, I say this as a, as a writer. And, and I think in this case here, unnecessarily complicating this, a simple concept of light duty and heavy duty.
If, if we take out by wheel, you know, actually, if we take out by wheel, um, I might take out the versus wheels because it's like, well, versus what? I, we've never even talked about wheels.
I mean, here's a question, why?
I'm talking. Take them out if you don't want them. That's good, next.
You guys are thinking.
Versus wheels, good.
Kevin, you understand that?
Are you clear on that?
So I'm not gonna put the two, 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 the, the one we talked about by wheels. I'm just gonna delete that, that parentheses, uh, by wheel. And then I'm gonna take out verse wheel later in the paragraph.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to me.
Great, next.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, um, Article 20th. Um, I had one question on this, Kevin. And because of the, the way you wrote it before, it was very clear where like total price minus the, uh, trade-in value was the net price and that tied back into what we're asking the town for. Um, the very last sentence here is the estimated value of a retired mower is 200. So is, is that a trade-in?
It's true, and I don't think it makes a difference to anybody. Let's.
It only makes a difference if you're trading it in and instead you're asking for 10,000 and you're trading in, you know, to, to keep consistent with the other ones. I'm not sure why we shared that the value is 200 unless we're doing something with that.
It was requested at a prior meeting that we include what the estimated value or trade-in would be. Um, so I put that in as a placeholder for discussion. I know that the value of it's very minimal, relatively speaking to a vehicle trade-in. So I, I, it's, how, whatever the purpose of the board is, I mean, I can, I can tweak the language. I don't know what gear, I typically they go on combines and somebody comes over for $200 and buys it and puts it in the bag with his truck and he leaves. It's, uh, not very.
That was actually what I wrote down. I said, is this sold as surplus? Just, you know, so it's like, it's so low.
At the end, at the end of the period where it says the estimated value of the, uh, retired mower is $200 if it can be disposed of. We're, we're not even sure that anybody's gonna buy it at 200 bucks.
I mean, I think for a truck or a truck or a car or something, people are used to, i- it's good to put trade-in value and, and do the math right there. I think $200 on $10,000, when we don't know to Boyd's point, what's gonna happen to it? It's, no, no one, no one gets rid of their lawnmower and worries and agonizes about what they're gonna get for it. I don't think.
Well, we'll just pull it. Last sentence, pull it.
Yep. Okay, thank you. And I put, um, you know, useful life up to four years. Talked with Gary that least useful life's three to four years.
I saw that, good, good.
Are, are you comfortable with that language?
Yeah, you understand the math though.
Yo, of course.
You can't say four and have three year and, okay. So up to four, that's good with me. It, it doesn't put a three in there. Anybody does, okay. They may, somebody may say, well, what if it's not four and two, two, but three is asking for trouble.
Then if you put off that last sentence, then you can just accept the changes.
I'm sorry, man, I missed that.
So if you take out that last sentence, then you can just accept all the changes.
Okay, excellent. I will do that. Thank you. This is great. We're making great progress, everyone.
Okay, 21st.
I very, I promise you, it's looking so much cleaner on my screen than I'm sure yours do at the moment.
It's very hard for me to read the, the cross-out sometimes. Sometimes I have to accept the change and look at it that way in my screen. Um, it's just my eyes, but, okay, the 21st, any changes or concerns or questions with the edits?
I do question whether we really, it, it's good information, but I think it's, it is too much to try to put in that second paragraph in the explanation. Um, it, it may just generate questions unnecessarily. As long as.
Which paragraph? Which paragraph? Because it looks like he crossed out.
Has it been, hi, again, I'm looking at it the wrong way. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's out.
Is it out?
It's out.
Thank you. Never mind, never mind, never mind.
Okay, so okay to accept the changes as presented?
Yep.
Right. This is great.
Okay, um, the Article 22nd, I had one little nit, um, that's in the third paragraph. So it says, this article would fund the engineering, planning, clearing and plantings of and 300 additional lots.
Yeah.
So I think and just comes out.
Placeholder, I missed that, yeah.
I, I, I replaced, uh, of and with for, planning for expansion of the top at word FOR and replacing of and and.
Oh, okay, for 300 additional lots. That sounds good.
Sounds good.
Not where lots is, but at, at the plantings. After plantings, I said four.
Clearing and plantings for 300 additional lots.
You know, do you, do we want to add the word estimate? At some point, I thought we had estimate in there because I think that 300, we're not sure if that's a hard, hard number. It could be a little more, it could be a little bit less. Um, but a plantings for an estimated, I think that's where the and was in there, Mr. Gant.
Excellent, excellent. Estimated, estimated.
Right there.
All right, and so it's gonna, plantings for an estimated 300 additional lots. And if, are we, so we're good? I'll make the, uh, accept deletions and accept.
Yep.
Fantastic.
Sounds good. All right, um, Article 23rd, the roof. It says here, this is likely to be removed?
Um, yes, so Laura had, um, had, had provided a capital plan with a $30,000 specification study to be prepared for, uh, the roof. Um, subsequently, I did a little bit of research with the transition. Um, I talked with a few other people. Two things here. One, we had in late January, so after capital approved, we actually found a vendor who did not a comprehensive study, but a, a very good study on the roof and what was leaking and what needed to be addressed. Um, and so I talked with Paul of Facilities and I said, do we need to do a spec- specification at this point? He said, I don't think you need to, because I said, I'm not spending, I think I mentioned, $30,000 is a big number. Um, and so what, what I discussed and what we landed on, I talked with Dan, our new library director, is we're late in the game. If we're gonna do the rubber membrane roof over the children's section, it would probably be at a $45,000 cost to do that. Um, and we could do that without any specification, um, study being performed. And that's where the majority of the leaks are taking place right now. Um, Mr. Gant, I saw you at the, um, at the li- lic- alcohol licensing board meeting and that was Dan and I walking around. We were actually looking at the, the roof and different things in the building that day. You saw me kind of wandering, wandering through the meeting. Um, so I've got a good handle on this one. I, I made some temporary repairs for short money at the end of January. I've talked to some of the librarians who spend time in the children's room. They said there hasn't been leaks through the roof. They heard noise, they think maybe there's some water, but nothing's come through. For $2,300, Paul thinks that we can get through at least another year without having to do the full $45,000 refurbication, refurb, refurbbing of the roof as they've been, as it's called out in the study. So my gut says this should come out, but I also wanted to have that discussion that if we wanted to invest in the library this year, this article would be modified to talk about the, the refurbbing of the, the rubber membrane roof at a cost of about $45,000 versus the 30, which would come out of the free cash.
Replacing, not refurbishing, right?
It, it, it wasn't a full replacement, Mr. Gant. I actually questioned that when I was talking with Paul and he said it, it, it didn't, the way they, I, I didn't get into the specifics because my, I was already like, this is past, I'm already over on the 300 year mark, you know, uh, target for capital. And this brings us closer to that if we remove it. And it, I, really it's on the library that I don't have all the details at this point to feel comfortable moving it forward. But I didn't want to zero-sum say we're moving it out without having a discussion and letting the board know sort of what's been happening the last couple of weeks around it.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think we would have trouble with 30,000 on doing a study. So, so you're gonna leave it in there, correct?
So I can.
The time being, what?
I can, I, well, the option is I can draft a new warrant article that talks about doing the, the refurbbing of the roof and I'll get more specifics from the study and incorporate that language and increase the free app, free cash ass to 100 and, uh, by another 15,000. Or I can remove this article in its entirety this year and out of the operating budget next year, they'll spend about 2,300 to patch the roof, um, as, until we can get to the next year where we might come back with a, a $45,000 ass roughly.
That option seems to make sense.
Roof, I would wait.
Yeah, I mean.
They think they can get another year out of it and it's still very vague. It sounds a little vague.
I agree.
Sounds, sounds to me like the whole program is neck. First of all, I know that the roof leaks. I've talked to Laura about it several times. Um, but the fact of the matter is this whole thing is nebulous enough that I don't think we're prepared to talk about 30 grand, um, because I don't know if we know what we're going to do yet.
Or even 45.
Or even 45, which is worse.
Refurbishing.
See, my, one of the things we did with the police station is we had a, when the roof was leaking significantly last year, um, we got some quotes to, to do the slate roof over at a quarter million dollars. We got quotes to do an asphalt roof, which would not have the same charm that, that roof that exists now, um, if we took that slate off. And we were struggling with how we were gonna address the leaks. We actually talked with Conamara Farm, who has a similar slate roof to what we have at the police station. And what they do is they have a vendor annually come in and replace all the slate tile that needs to be replaced. Um, so it's an annual maintenance of that and it's worked really well. And so we actually, rather than spending any capital money, um, on doing a new roof or taking away the existing slate, um, we've been, we actually just did it two weeks ago. The guys were out here and they did some, some, their annual patchwork on the roof. Uh, because I saw the invoice, I signed off on it last week. Um, and it's worked out really well. So one of the things I want to now go back to, now that we have sort of a creative way to, to not necessarily spend So one of the things I wanna now go back to, now that we have sort of a creative way to, to not necessarily spend significant funds on a capital project, but finding a way to maintain the charm of the roof and keeping it from leaking. Maybe there's a similar solution with the library roof. Maybe there isn't, but we wanna, I wanna explore those types of options cause, um, it was by additional work, we came to the conclusion that we could do better on this police and maybe we can do the same on the, on the library. So punting it for a year makes a lot of sense to allow us to have that chance to, to better understand what the options are.
Anyone uncomfortable with pulling it?
Take it out.
With pulling it, yeah.
All right.
But I would let, let, let the library know exactly what's going on. The trustees know exactly what's going on.
I'll call Kathy and let her know that we're, we're intending that to, to try to do something next year. We've got money, the maintenance, we've boost, bolstered that up in the operating budget. And, um, we'll come back next year for that. And we, I, and the expectation is that we look at some other options and maybe bring in that vendor we're using at the police station to see if there's a better option there. Let me just.
Oh, is there someone else, another comment? Uh, article 24th, the, the water tank storage, uh, are we still just waiting on language for that, Kevin? Nothing new here?
It might not be needed. Our hope is that it's not. What we're looking at now is trying to determine if we locate it at the DPW building, what the setbacks requirements are and if there needs to be a taking as a result of those setbacks. Um, we don't believe at this time that we necessarily need to purchase land to place the tank on it. It's just a matter of we're exempt or not exempt from the setback requirements that zoning requires of us.
Okay, so you'll come back with more information. You're in the process of looking at it. Okay, article 25th, "The Water, um, Department Billing Software." Any concerns with the edits that have been put in?
Nope. Nope.
There we go.
Okay, um, so we'll accept the edits as presented?
Yes.
Okay, and article 26th, Kevin, is that just coming out or you're just not renumbering yet until this is finalized?
Um, 26th, that's a beautification. That's coming out. We, I think we talked about removing that article.
We did, but it's still in there and are you gonna renumber after this now that that's been pulled and the library's been pulled?
Yeah, so what I've done is because the initial list of articles to avoid confusion by flipping, by deleting and then moving them up and then having, if we add one, move it down, that type of thing. I've kept the deleted ones at blanks. The last version, maybe this next one now, I'll update. Um, I'll consolidate the articles so every article has a article underneath it. Um, for the beautification article 26th, I deleted that, I think, the last version. So that one's off here, but it is on the side. I, I think the, the, the track changes appear differently on all the screens. This one's, this one has been deleted.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm actually looking at a printed out version cause I have to write on things. So I wasn't actually looking at the screen. On my printed version, it shows it with a strike through so that you'd have to accept it and change the number, so.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept the deletion, um, formally right now.
Okay, great. Um, so article 27, I had, uh, two, three, three or four, very small, very small. So, um, in that very first sentence, "To see if the town will vote to raise and assess blah, blah, blah for the repair and/or replacement," so it's just adding a "the."
Yep.
Um.
Same below.
And same below, yeah. Um, and then, um, question here on, um, whether we need the words in here. To Boyd's point, do most people know to a level of detail or is it just confusing them? So it's the very last paragraph in italics. And the last sentence says, "The work will ultimately advance the town's understanding of subsurface oil, shallow bedrock, and groundwater quality within the bedrock, bedrock aquifer."
If, um, sounds smart.
It does sound smart, but it's like, for what purpose? Like, we, we need that, we either have to say why that's a benefit or just don't put it in there. Um, people will go, well, why are we doing that? You know, why do we need that?
Lynn, if, if, the, the second line in the third paragraph, "Work to be performed is mandated to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." The rest is all just kind of filler at that point, right? Cause it, it's telling the town, "Look, we have to do this by mandate."
Yeah, is understanding the subsurface and shallow bedrock mandated? And why? Like, I don't know, it just, it didn't seem like a mandate so much as, "This will advance our understanding."
I agree with you. I, I agree with you. I think, I think it's overkill. But maybe that's nor- maybe that's normal and I'm forgetting.
I would have, if I'm an average person, I'd get like halfway through here and I'd go, yeah, blah, 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 yeah, okay. I, I after mandated, it'd be like, I'm not really.
Right, we have to do it.
Yeah, I, I agree that the, the purpose of the explanation was not to give all of the details, but to, the, the original purpose was to put in layman's language what that particular warrant was saying. And sometimes you don't have to say very much because it's clear. Other times it's not as clear. Um, so we really, and I think, Marshall, you said this, we, we have to be careful with how many words we put together. So I would agree with you that it's gonna become blah, 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 and that we should really trim this one down. Um, even putting in CMR 1900, 19.000 and CMR 19.113. We, we gotta, we gotta trim it down some, uh.
Dick, do you wanna take a stab at it? You're good with writing. You wanna do a layman's term stab to send to Kevin on this one?
Okay, uh, but I, I would, I would take out, I think, most of what we were talking about near the end. It's, it's just too much detail to try to do. I will, I'll do that, okay.
So I'll, I'll delete.
Thank you.
For now, on this version, "The work will ultimately advance the town's understanding of surface," the rest of that sentence is up to aquifer. And then if there's other tweaks to the CMR 19 and things of that nature that, that Mr. Gant wants to share, I'll incorporate that accordingly. In the next one.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Appreciate that. Um, okay.
Are, uh, the, 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 if, we did title it landfill repairs versus improvements. Wanted to just make sure everyone's comfortable with that, that language change for the title.
We did, we did agree to change that last meeting.
Perfect. And, um, the, so the first two paragraphs, though, we're, we're good. The explanation will tweak.
Yeah, just putting in "the" and "for the" were the only other, you know, the one.
It was Harry Truman who said, "Never use two words when, when we'll do best." So let us, let us listen to President Truman.
Um, yes. Good thoughts. Um, article 28th, "The Tree Removal." Um, I only had one suggestion on this, Kevin. Um, and it's in the italics part, the last sentence that says, "The town budget includes funds, blah, blah, blah." I, I put in here annually, "The town budget annually includes funds for tree removal." These funds are used primarily to remove the ones that come down in a storm. So just to let them know, this is something that we always put in there, um.
Isn't it?
What, what about having it just as the, uh,
The town budget or the annual town budget?
Budget.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the way people normally think, oh.
Wherever you wanna put annually, just to let them know that.
I, I think, I think it would read, "The annual town budget includes," yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, so here's, here's a, um, a discussion of what we're really asking for. Um, I'm not sure how we kind of change it around one way or the other. Um, the, the way it reads here, it says, it's essentially saying two things, town properties and rights of way. Um, that, I'm not sure why it says both. The, one of the reasons I could think of is, um, along Rowley Bridge Road, I don't think the town officially owns that right of way.
And that's the discussion we had last week, Dick?
Yeah.
Just that issue, that some is town property and some are right of ways that the town does not own. So if there's a better way to word it.
So the question in, in, in part is, how, how do we kind of limit it? If, if it's for rights, if it's just for, if it's, if it said just for rights of way, for example, then, um, I have a right of way on my property for drainage. The town owns a right of way on my property for drainage. And so that means that this warrant article would, uh, allow me to call the town up and say, "Please take that tree down. I understand you have some money to do that and you could decide to do that." Hopefully you wouldn't, but you could decide to do that based on the article. So I'm trying to figure out how to, to kind of control it.
Well, I mean, the, 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 if I may interrupt, I think what you're trying to do.
Public rights of way. We could change it by saying town properties and public rights of way. That might, that might do it. That might do it. I just, it just came to mind.
Mr. Gant, and if I may, it, it may be not so much in that part of the, for the freology, but, but, you know, in, all of, all of this is gonna be done on a case by case basis, right, right? Somebody's say, or this tree needs to come, come down. We're not just going, going to automatically take down every tree everywhere. So it would be language about as deemed appropriate by, by law. What would have, rather than trying to, trying to figure it out in the town property and rights of way.
So I think, I think this may be important. Uh, if there's a tree on my property that's very close to the town, that's my job. And this, this article is not there to, to take it down. Um, I have a responsibility for that. And if, if something, if somebody tells me it's a, it's a problem and I choose not to take it down and it causes problem, then, uh, the insurance company will give me a hard time and the course and everything else. That, that, that's why this, I, I think it really is important because it may come up as a question even at town meeting. Well, what kind of trees are you talking about? Um, so that's why, it, it's not saying under what circumstances the, the trees get down. It's, it's, the, the, the issue here is not the circumstances, but rather what, 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 what does this article allow to be funded?
Right. I like your idea, Dick, for a public because that sounds like, again, it has to do with the town and the town's concerns, not private one.
It just came to me. So, so maybe, maybe it would read something like this, hazardous trees from town properties and public rights of ways.
Yeah, I, I like that.
It just hit me. I've, I've been playing with it and trying to figure out how to do it, but I think that's the way to do it. Yeah, public rights of way, excellent. And then if there's a problem in, uh, the town forests, for example, we have some trees that are a problem of some sort, uh, we can use them for that, to, to, to take that tree out. We, we had some kind of a fire or something and we had to, yeah. So it's town properties and public rights of way, excellent.
Um, everyone okay with adding the word "public" in there?
Sure, sure, thanks.
And I, I will un-highlight that to start with because I wanted to make sure that we got that wording right cause I know we had a long discussion last time. So, um, I'll accept that, that changes as well.
So that, so that ripples through all three, all three sections?
Yes.
Okay, um, but, but, but it's important for us to agree that that's what it is. Uh, that's the way.
Right, I think it's just finding the right words, but you're right. It's only town property or property that's of importance to the town for some kind of safety reason or, and that's why we have a right of way. We need it for some town purpose. So I think we're all.
Dick, that sounds proper to me. That sounds accurate to me.
I was trying to look for Marshall there because he had some thoughts.
No, I mean, that's fine. I, I just feel like, like, I, I get what we're going at. I was just, just trying to come at it from a different, different direction there. Um, but I think we're all, all agreement on exactly what kind of tree. There's no disagreement in terms of what we're talking about, about. It's just the right language to make that clear.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, um, article 2BD, "Tree Plantings." It's a new one, based upon the discussion last week.
Same issue right there.
Yep, I updated those as well with, with rights of way and public, I'm sorry, public rights of way. Uh, it's been up, uh, all the.
Right of ways. Didn't we agree that it's right of ways?
Yes, single and right.
Right of ways.
Right of ways.
Okay, cause that's what I had originally. I was listening to how you're pronouncing it, Mr. Gant. I thought we, I apologize. I'll, I'll.
True, true. Mr. Gant did add a, uh, "s" at the end of "right," but you know, we're, we're doing this in live, we're doing it live, so.
But what it's worth, I did Google it while I was, I was, we were talking, cause I heard that and I, I, I typed in right of ways or rights of way. Um, and Wiki, the Wiki dictionary I found says the plural.
Wiki dictionary.
The way, I know, I'm sorry. I, I only had so much time.
Merriam-Webster, come on.
I think it's a right of way and there are plurals. There are multiple right of ways. So single, singular on the right.
I say, put it in as at all three words, right of way.
And then you're gonna have to be the one to speak to this one if there are questions, just to hear you say it. Okay, um, all right, so 35,000 for free cash. Plantings of trees on town properties and public right of ways, including all incidental. Any changes to this one?
So this is the.
Have it just.
Yes.
This is, this is the first time we've had a planting warrant, is that correct? Or the first time planting's been?
Yes, before Kevin had a combined in.
Yeah, I said, I remember.
Okay, so on the explanation, I, I would, uh, strike the word strategic planting. However, that comes out. And then, uh, I would simply make the next sentence a, a little bit simpler. Currently, the town does not have funding sources to purchase and replace trees. I, and I think it's just confusing to try to put in that budget line item and all that sort of stuff. So I would strike, "Has an operating budget line item for tree removal, but."
The town does not.
May I ask what your issue with the word str- strategic is? Cause in this, in this case, I think I know what strategic means, but, but.
I think different people have different ideas of what strategic means and a strategic planting. I'm not sure what it means. I, I think, I think it's just like a fluff line, fluff word in there that different people might have different opinions of. It's for planting trees and I don't want somebody to get into an argument with us a few years from now about, well, that's not a strategic place or that's not a strategic tree.
I think we're, we're saying it's well thought out, right? We're not gonna randomly just throw trees around the town because we took down five. So, um, that one could be just discussed and, and not necessarily, you know, written.
I, I, I think the main.
Could assign it to the tree planting, um, committee, which is under the Conservation Commissioner. I don't think you should, but you could.
I, I mean, all I'm gonna say is I think what it means, as we discussed, if you take that down, you know, a, a, a tree at the corner of, you know, First and Second Street, that doesn't mean we're gonna plant a new tree at the, at the First and Second, Second Street. That just means, you know, in theory, theory for every tree taken down, we're gonna plant a new one. But if you take that, that out, to, to Lynn's point, it'll just be in the, in the actual discussion and not on the, on the paper.
That, that sentence might, the second one, not the one we're just discussing, but that second sentence might pose a problem because it says currently, let's say, the, uh, the town does not have an operating budget line item to purchase and replace trees that have fallen or require removal. So to the point, Marshall, that you just said, we wouldn't necessarily put it up exactly where it was. I don't want people to think if it falls down, we come in and purchase new one and put it up in its place. Or if we took one down, we're gonna replace it. We may decide that is not a good place for a tree or besides the fact that it's dying, it's gonna grow and interfere with X, Y, and Z. So not to let them think it's a one for one in that exact location.
It's important, that's important, yeah.
Yeah, the, the point of fact, I think, I mean, I'm arborist, but I'm gonna guess that the trees that are coming down, down are in more cases than not in public way, way gonna be, be not places we want to plant a new tree, right? Cause if it's coming down in a bad place, then we don't wanna put in, put a new to come down in a, in a bad place.
The idea is, is if we have a tree that comes down or a tree that has to be removed and either it's providing buffer between the rail trail and the person's backyard or if it's, well, that's a bad example. I, let me ignore the rail trail. It was in a real life example, but that's not what we're gonna use it for. Um, if, if there's a tree that comes down and, um, someone feels passionately, it's a, it's a very mature tree or something that, that provides them some, um, aesthetics that they like, whatever it might be, it, it can be planted because the tree was deceased. It wasn't necessarily impactful to the op, of where it was located. I mean, ideally, we would be able to replant in, in place. If we can't, the idea would, in my mind at least, would be that to say, you know, this is a dangerous location to replant a tree. It won't survive or it could come in a few years, be a hazard again, but we'll, we'll plant, uh, in kind somewhere else. And we talked like replacing one of the ones that the Institution for Savings donated that recently didn't make it, um, along Washington. So that's kind of the idea is, is trying to go back to where it was if possible. If not, we'll plant in a, in a better location.
Kevin, what did you anticipate for the replacement? Did you anticipate an eight foot tree that requires supports? Did you, you know, if somebody asks a question, what are you replacing this with? Is it a little sapling? We throw an acorn in there, you know, like, so, so what do we say?
They're bigger for, um, diameter, um, calibers, what, what you'll see in, in plantings. Um, it could vary, though. You go up to six inches, you sometimes find a little bit smaller too, but that's.
So substantial, cool.
Yeah, so.
How does this sentence sound? Um, currently, the town does not have an operating budget line item or it does not have a line item in the budget, whatever, to purchase new trees, to offset trees that have been removed?
Yeah, offset offset is a good word because that doesn't, it's not replaced, it's set.
So could I make a suggestion? It does not have a funding source to purchase and plant trees, period. We don't have, it's true, we don't have a funding source. What do you, where are the trees? Why are they? That leaves it all open to discussion.
Well, the idea here is that if we take one down, we're gonna plant one. So we're not just buying trees for town. People may say, why are you doing that? We have enough trees. The idea here is that if we take a tree down, we are going to plant somewhere so that the balance is set.
I think that's the idea. I I, you know, part of operationally speaking, you know, as we roll this out, you know, there might be a place where we, you know, we aren't replacing or we find we, again, I'll reference the Institution for Savings tree that although that's coming down on a right of way, that could would count anyway. But, you know, if there's a request for a tree that for one reason or another, or, you know, as we're, we want to put some flowering, you know, springtime flowering trees, some strategic locations. I don't know if it'd be a one for one per se, but the flexibility to be able to identify a location to plant might be nice as well. It's not like we're gonna run out and spend it all and.
Well, that's another reason that I like offset because it definitely means it's one for one.
This was a point I was I was about to make. I mean, offset just means means they're coming down and trees are going.
Yep.
Madam Chair, if you want to forward me that language, I'll incorporate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Kevin, can I quickly, I'm sorry, go back to the previous one because I use this wording. The town has an inventory of hazardous trees. Did you actually get something from David Bond, which is his inventory of that? Because I'm a little concerned with that language if we don't have it in hand because somebody may say, could I see it? Is my tree on that list? And that this doesn't say that that is the only trees that we take down, but it indicates that we do have a a clear list of trees. If you could help me with that, I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate that question, Mr. Gant, because initially I know when I spoke with our tree ward, Dave Bond, he's indicated there's a number of trees he's identified that 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 he would like to take down. When I meet with met with him, I think last week, we toured some of the work National Grid's doing and we talked about this article as well. He was gonna prepare a list and a final dollar amount of what he estimates that cost to be, hence it's why it's highlighted. So my hope is we'll have that in hand before we go to print. And if we don't, then we maybe that language gets tweaked so we're more accurate.
Okay.
Um, the only thing.
Let's push for that inventory because that that says a lot and people makes people feel more more comfortable if that's the case.
I I just, if if it's not a comprehensive list, if we just put the town as an inventory of hazardous trees within town, because it says across our town properties, so it sounds very comprehensive.
Yeah.
So it might be a work in progress.
That has a number of many, many, many hazardous trees. I mean, I all of it, none of them are as good as inventory if we have an inventory. But let's let's see how how David's able to help us.
I I don't think you want to open that subject at town meeting.
Not if we can help it.
Did we decide? Did we decide what to do with the word strategic?
I think we took it out, did we?
Yeah, I mean, because ultimately.
Yeah, we did.
Your offset accomplishes what the word strategic was was trying to accomplish.
Well, the only the only reason I would argue to leave it in was the fact that this gives this gives us the right to decide which ones should be replaced and which ones should not be.
And I think offset that kind of does the same thing.
If that does that for you, fine.
Okay, um, moving on to twenty nine.
So I apologize, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I I'm clear. So the language of fund planting of trees on town properties and public rights of ways is is acceptable in the first two paragraphs. And then on the third paragraph, I think, Madam Chair, you said you were gonna send over some some updates on the language for that.
I am. Yep.
And on the explanation of tree removal, we're gonna wait to see if David provides inventory in before we go to print. And if we have that and it's something that's acceptable, we'll leave it in. If it's not, we'll consider removing that word and and adjusting accordingly. Is that, did I miss anything? I just taken some notes. I wanted to make sure I had everything.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Great, thank you.
Inventory does not need to be perfect. There's no such thing as a perfect tree inventory. But something that represents an inventory, more than two trees.
We're probably good. I think Dave has more than two trees identified, so.
I I wouldn't I wouldn't put the inventory list in this in this.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, no, just the word itself. If someone said we have an inventory, we should have an inventory. There should be a list somewhere. And to Dick's point, it has to be more than two trees because that's not an inventory.
I can live with that somewhat.
Okay, Article twenty ninth, any changes, comments?
The only comment might be, it's it's all right. There's no, but the the comment is the explanation is long, but maybe that's the the right thing to have. That's the only comment, but I'm not making any changes.
This is really a nit, Kevin, but on that explanation, at the end of the second line after Little League, there's a comma. I don't think we need it. It says used extensively by Little League and adult softball, blah, blah, blah. So I I wouldn't put the comma after Little League. I paused and then when I started reading again, I was like, well, that was a.
And it's also.
It was like, I'm not sure why I paused, but I did because I saw the comma.
I think it's another place that's kind of overkill. I mean, over many years, these fields have been extensively used by Little, of course they have. And then you say, as a result of wear and tear on the fields, the playing surfaces have deteriorated. I mean, it's it's, you're telling a hell of a story for something pretty obvious. I don't mean that. I didn't mean that to come across as snippy. I really didn't. I I heard what it just said. I know it does. Now I hear it. I hear it echoing in my head.
Well, I I think.
If you can tighten it up, Pam, that would be good if you can tighten it up. If you want to make some suggestions, I think it would be better for tightened up. It's really, it's long. I didn't want to get.
Maybe just that sentence coming out as Cam said, you know, this is to improve the fields as as a result of wear and tear. Playing surfaces has have deteriorated. So that sentence can just come out.
Yeah, no, it's true because the next sentence tends to take of it in the same same way, which is we need to need to clear that this is all is all about the use, not, you know, you know, just we're taking something that's great and making it better. They 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 need to be fixed up to get back to you, you or you, you know, acceptable.
Mr. Brown, to save you an email, do you want to just identify one last time where that is and I'll make the deletion in real time?
The second, the second sentence, uh, over many years, these fields have been used extensively. I think you can strike that sense.
And start by just saying Little League is the beginning of that sentence?
No, keep going. By Little League and adult softball and baseball teams as well as general use by the tops field community.
Yeah, get rid of that entire. Go right to.
Right.
All right, so it would read community, the article would fund improvements, six baseball and softball fields at Pybrook Community Park, Clock, Proctor, as a result of wear and tear of the fields.
Yes.
Yep.
Period, etc. Okay, perfect.
Kevin, I don't know. I'm looking really hard. Maybe my eyes. Is there from the third line from the bottom after the word concern? Is there a period in there?
Concern.
There's something.
Uh, the wear and tear of the playing surfaces of trees. Concern.
Looks like a period.
That does look like a period.
With my terrible, with my terrible eyes.
My eyes, too. Great catch.
Okay.
Kevin, I think you can take that out.
Good.
All right.
All right, here we go.
Okay, moving on to the thirtieth. Um, I had one word that just had to come out in the the bolded section, recommended that the town vote. On the second line down after select board, I would take out the word to, the TO. So it's a to be expended by the select board for consulting services.
Yes. Great. And I, Heidi and I spent extensive time trying to get the language on the explanation as good as good as we could on the MS four. It's it's a very complicated one that, you know, we could, Heidi actually suggested over the weekend. She, we were texting back and forth and she said, do you want me to just do a PowerPoint to explain what it is? I said, I think we're just focusing on language right now.
Yeah, just something really simple. Yeah, there's a lot here.
Too much. You you can't, yeah.
There's a lot here. That could probably be skinny down. I I, the last sentence, stormwater BMPs. I don't know what a BMP is and probably people won't be there.
Just go to continue to try to tweak the language. Is that?
Yeah, just take out a lot so that from a layman's perspective, they get a general sense of what's what's going on.
Take out a lot.
And sometimes when something is very complex, it's hard to simplify it, but in this case, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, moving on then.
On the title of it, though, I would ask that we change the title. I I think if somebody's reading this, it's gonna create a lot of quick questions about stormwater and sewer. What are you talking about sewer? We don't have sewer. In the explanation, they can find out, you know, that sewer is in there, but maybe then they can ask some questions. But I think for the title, it would be most appropriate to say consulting for MS four general permit. I mean, that's what it's all about is getting to pay for consulting for achieving, getting our MS four general permit or submitting our 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 permit. It's for doing the permit. So again, my suggested wording is consulting for MS four general permit. And let them read about MS four and and the whole thing here and whatever else.
Is that what this does? This allows us to get a permit?
Maintain. We're required to have the permit and maintain that permit. We have to submit and perform certain actions annually around all that wording that I put in there.
To maintain MS four permit.
Okay. Uh, I I tell you, the one thing that we'd be concerned about is this is like more of a one time shot, if I'm not mistaken. Haven't we discussed discussed it as that?
Yes.
That is the intent to have.
And there's other monies that are ongoing annual things. So if we we say to get the general, to to do the general permit, okay, we can put it in, fine.
Because the the explanation will say we've fallen behind if we want to maintain the permit.
Okay, to maintain. Okay, right, okay. Consulting for MS, consulting to maintain MS four permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll I'll make sure that link, I'll run it by Heidi before I hit accept on that on the title, just to make sure I'm not I'm not missing anything. Let me just make a quick note.
Can you guys hear my dogs?
Nope, no.
Oh, a small thing, yeah, these nits. Uh, in the warrant, the first paragraph, speaking of commas, after the word, after select board in the second line, you can remove that comma. I think it's there from times that you say, comma with the advice of or something.
So it would read to expend by the select board for consulting.
Right, no comma, right.
Yeah.
And the good news is that the comma is not in the in the uh, motion itself.
Okay, so we'll wait.
Hey, Lynn.
Heidi, oh, go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, I'm sorry. A quick thing back on Article Article twenty ninth, something was bugging me. So you guys saw that period after the word concern. I think it's supposed to be there and I think we should take out to the individuals using these fields. I mean, of course, that's the safety concern to the players. So I don't I don't think we really need that in there.
Well, that's a good point.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So after concern, period.
Just end it there and then go to this article, then it's, you know, then it, so it should read and raised edges that pose a safety concern, period. This article would allow for the field, so kill the to the individuals using these fields.
It sounds okay. That clarifies it.
Good answer, good answer. Okay, um, thirty first, re-codification. I have here, I had one comment in here. I'll show the town adopted the codification.
Is the added language acceptable? I I know I went back to the old last year's as as recommended and tried to incorporate a sentence that would tell more of what it is, of what the art, of what the codification represents. Was that added language? Okay.
Sounds okay to me.
It's it's clear. I'm not sure it's necessary, but it's clear. It's very, it is clear.
Like, I do like it because I don't think anyone's gonna know what codification is. So, okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Accept that then. And moving on to the master plan.
So again, I just want to make sure this is one that will go into the STM. So we're getting a sneak preview of the language, I guess.
Okay, should we wait on it until it's in the STM then?
If you're comfortable with the language, it'll be one less thing at the STM level to review. I know we've done some work on it, so I don't know if, while it's fresh in our minds, we want to tackle it. There's, there's not much. I incorporated all the changes that was that were provided to me. So it hopefully meets what the expectation was.
I had the littlest of nits. I don't know why these always pop out at me, but in the second paragraph in italics, anytime you have two words describing a third word, you need to dash in between them. So the master plan process will be a community dash focused engagement.
And Kevin, in the sentence right below that, I'm sorry, did you get, did you get the correction? Ultimately, the process, shouldn't it be ultimately, the process will have a positive impact on the tax base? It's a little more confident.
Yep.
Concerning, I think it will.
It's the plan, right?
For spending money.
Spending money, let's say will.
And I made the change in the first two paragraphs, a consultant to assist in preparing a townwide master plan at the recommendation, Mr. Gant, which I thought was a a very good tweak. Does that sound okay to the board? I'll accept that change if it's acceptable.
Yep.
Yes, it does.
Any other changes? And since it's going in the STM, if you think of anything or or you're examining it closer, you can always send them to Kevin because it will pop in the STM.
And it's just master plan as the as the namesake for the article. It's simple. I hope that's okay. I didn't make any modifications on that.
I don't know if we want development of master plan or consulting services for master plan. Doesn't really make a difference to me, but I'm looking at the other.
It would make sense to to talk about the development of updating of the of the master plan or something like that.
Master plans for master plan.
Consulting for a development of master plan?
Well, how do we work the one before consulting to maintain MS four, right? Consulting.
To update or.
Update the master plan.
Town, the town's master plan?
Yeah, sounds good.
Oh, Kevin, I just saw one other thing on the Article twenty ninth, the park and ball field improvements. So we need an E.
Oh, sorry, twenty nine, that is.
The title, park and ball field improvements.
Yeah, we need to change that.
We first have to improve that.
I I moved so quickly on, I I moved quickly on those to come back to when they didn't catch that one, so.
Any other thoughts at this point on the the master plan to give to Kevin?
Nope.
Okay. Um, so Article thirty three and thirty fourth, any timeframe of when we're getting the wording on this one?
Received after I hit submit on Friday, it came in on Monday. So I, in the next version, I'll incorporate what they have. I have to make sure. I might, depending on how they word it, if it's a simple, you know, put it into this format, I might have KP just take a quick peek at it because it is contractual with the the master agreement to see if there's anything they they would look at all of them anyway, but I might have them take a quick early look at it just to make sure they're satisfied with it to save us from having to make lots of edits and then have them say it's not written correctly.
Okay, and this is where the new one that Dick was referring to would go. Their request to take the refund that's coming from the debt and put it into their stabilization fund?
So I have an update on that. If 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 we have time, I can just give a quick five minute, couple minute primer. So. So Catherine and I, we talked with the town auditor, Powers and Sullivan. And the way it mechanically works is that so on the operating budget, they're representing a 2.2% increase, including if you take the operations at 4.9 and the reduction of 143,000 on the debt, it shows as a 2.2% increase because their debt was a debt exclusion that was originally taken out. And so it goes beyond the tax levy, right? So it's extra money that the taxpayers have paid over the years to cover that cost. That money has to go back to the taxpayer. It's not a return to the town. It's put towards new expenses. It has to actually be returned. So the reels, you have to net out in what the so that the representation of the negative is actually doesn't play here from how they're presenting their budget. The real budget number is 4.9% because we have to net that savings back to to the to the community ultimately. It's not that we're going to write everybody a check. I don't want that confused. But there has to be representative on the model as a number that comes off an expenditure that we now have to incur to pay them back. So it's we're working through what that looks like, but it's not as simple as sort of free money that's coming back. Now free money we can give back. And we just want to make sure that we have a really good handle on it before or at least if they do meet soon with us, because the school committee is going to come back with their recommendation, which I did talk to Melissa earlier this week, and I said, really, I explained this to her. And I said, you really need to come back to us with what the ask is so we can say up or down. But this is generally what we're thinking at this point, that it's not exactly how it's being presented per se. Not that they're trying to misinform us. I think there's just a lot of moving parts. She did say that Jeff Sands, the finance director from Middleton, actually said the same thing that I that we said when it was first proposed by Middleton. So I think really Middleton's, we got to, what I suggest is that the town administrators, myself, Andy and Matt, need to talk with the administration of the schools and really get a handle on what they're asking and what the impacts are financially. So that when the school committee does bring it, we have a real true understanding of the impacts and whether or not we would support something like that. But there's more to it, I guess is the best way to put it than than meets the eye initially, as it was sort of articulated to us.
So Kevin, if they were coming in, they said at a 2.2 because they were considering that money, they're really coming in at a 4.9?
Because the money's not ours, correct? The money goes back because it's above the levy and it's money that was raised for the for the schools for specific purposes.
So are they going back to reexamine that 4.9 and bring it back down to guideline?
So there, so the guidelines relevant to their overall budget, which they're at 2.9%. Our proration like last year is skewed compared to the other two communities. So we have a higher percentage, whereas Boxer and Milton are well under their guidelines. So likelihood is that the two other communities, because they did meet guidelines of what was proposed, are very close to it. But ultimately, they're going to see it lower than what their guideline was for the overall budget. They'll probably approve it. And Boxer, it's been a little different the last two years. They've they've asked for a little bit more, even beyond what the guidance was. One year was 0% guidance increase on their budget. They've been a little bit more restrictive in what their requirements are for the guidelines. So it wouldn't put it and there's still potential that the that Boxer might or Middleton too, or Topsil for that matter, might come back and say, you guys, we need you to tighten up a little bit more. How can we find some additional savings, which we tend to do anyway? So we'll we'll see how it plays out. But yeah, we're we're they're basically at the guidelines, I'd say. They're not fully there, about a 0.15% off the mark at this point.
That's right. The guideline is their overall budget. That's that's what it needs to be. It's unfair to them any other way. And last year, they were clearly over that when we came back to them and said, you got to get down to the guideline. And that affected us. It brought it down some, but it certainly we had a great increase. But the same thing here, it's what their overall budget amount is. That's the guideline.
Yeah. Okay, so more discussion to be had then to go back to them. And if we if we decide to put it back in, we'll have to vote to open the warrant again to put this new article in.
But my sense on this is that after after you explained it here, Kevin, is that we need to keep this as clean as possible and essentially give it back to the taxpayers in a reduction, they won't see it specifically, but in the amount of taxes that they get charged next year, this will be prorated over everybody based on their taxes. And I think that's that's the right way to do it. It's not a lot of either any people one way or the other, but it's the right way to do it.
And mechanically, we're working through that with the auditor to see what what really, how it should be done and make sure we're here to that. I know from the model standpoint, which is where we've been super focused on and how we're going to balance the budget again this year. You know, that that was something of that was a little bit unexpected. After we looked at it, we we vetted it and we looked at the model, we said, we gotta, we gotta better represent that. So it didn't help us in the model sense, and that's where we've been focused. But yes, that's definitely something we recognize will have to be adjusted for the community's benefit.
Good. Just a small fun on this.
I was just gonna say, if that's the case, then there's no article coming back to us to address their stabilization fund?
It depends. They might still make a proposal to the town to see if we're in if we're open to. Again, it was generated, I think, from Middleton, not the school. The school said, okay.
If they do, and it's totally separate apart from this refund that has to go back to the taxpayer. It would be an article asking them, asking the town whether or not we would fund their stabilization fund.
The mechanism to do it is probably through a free cash appropriation. It wouldn't be taking the 143 and directly appropriating that back. This probably the mechanism would be, okay, there's 143 on the that came back to us if it truly came back, right? As as new month is as a return that didn't wasn't earmarked back to people, we can use it. We would probably pivot likely, we haven't gotten that far, but through a free cash allocation of $143,000, which would be an article like we have, would be an additional article that would ask for that, the town to approve the the contribution to the stabilization fund, the Mascanomics Stabilization Fund, just like we have in the other stabilization councils, is sort of without digging too deep yet.
Later offline. Dick, did you have another statement?
So so the message to the layman is we charged you too much. We owe you this money back, but we're going to take this money and put it in a stabilization fund.
In lieu of returning the money, right?
In lieu of returning the money, right? We charged you too much. We're not giving it back to you. We're putting it in a stability. That's that's the layman's. Okay, fine. Just a quick one in case it stays on here. In the motion, it ends with including incidental and all that. Just take that phrase out.
Which article are you on?
Hopefully, this will all go away, but just to clean that part up.
Which article, Dick?
The retiring school building for debt.
Oh.
Okay, Article 36. Okay.
Yep.
Right.
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
No, we weren't. We were talking about a brand new article that's not even on here, which is whether we take that 143 and put it into the stabilization fund.
Oh, that's a separate. Oh, okay.
That's a separate, brand new, that's still being discussed. The retiring the debt is.
Oh, this is the debt. Oh, this is. Oh, I know which one this is. Yes, I know, of course.
Apologies to confusion because we did cover the last few Masco ones. That's why I brought the Masco debt. But this is also debt for the elementary schools.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm all I'm all what? Yep, thank you. I got it.
Okay, so then going on to 36.
But before we do that, then back to Mascanomit. Where are where are we on amendments and their consideration of the requested amendment from last year?
Yep, I appreciate that. So I reached out to Megan, to Melissa Ogden, and we talked on the phone about this as something that we wanted to investigate further. And we'd like the request that that be an article and that that information is available for auditing purposes. And I know that here we spoke as well on this. Response was the same response we received, I think, last year, which was they referenced Mass General Law as well as their internal policies that they do not distribute to third parties specific information relative to the student body of minors. I've started to look through the book and verse that was provided and seeing if it's 100% tight of what they've proposed or what they've said. I also plan to talk, I didn't want to make a special call to KP because it costs money to do that. But the next time I was gonna.
Edit to the discussion with them. That's good. Okay. And I do have wording that we offered them at the time, so it's a starting point. If you want that, I can find that. But the excuse last year was I didn't remember them providing a lot of data that way. And I appreciated the excuse, and that was that it was late in the game. And I understood that. So I backed off on that one, or we backed off on that one. But it's a little different this time. Okay, thank you. Next.
If you want, I can distribute to the board the email I received that that references that if anyone wants to do their own research.
That would be good. I don't remember that from last year.
Yeah, I'll send that out to everyone after the meeting.
And if you want wording from me, let me know.
Okay.
Yeah, let me. I'll check with KP next time we talk. And if you, in the meantime, you're welcome to send information.
Okay, okay.
Article 36, retiring the school building debt. Any changes or concerns about the edits?
So and that's when then in the motion to remove, end it with projects and ruin the words including all incidental and related expenses.
Yep, also.
Okay, so on the explanation, I kind of rewrote it some. Let me read it as I have it. The 2018 Annual Town Meeting Approved Issuance of Debt For The Replacement Of Proctor And Stewart Elementary School Roofs In The Amount Of Seven Million. Because The Massachusetts School Building Authority Funded A Portion Of The Project With A Grant, The Town Did Not Need To Borrow The Total Amount Authorized. This Article Would Rescind That Unneeded Portion Of The Borrowing Authorization, Period.
Sounds fine with me.
Yeah, it sounds good. Can you read that one more time, Dick? Because I think that was right.
The 2018 Annual Town Meeting Approved The Issuance Of Debt For The Replacement Of Proctor And elementary and Proctor And Seward Elementary School Roofs In The Amount Of Seven Million. Because The Massachusetts School Building Authority Funded A Portion Of The Project With A Grant, The Town Did Not Need To Borrow The Total Amount Authorized. This Article Rescinds That Unneeded Portion Of The Borrowing Authorization.
Do we need to say any dollar amount, Dick, or would you leave it open?
But what?
Would you specify the amount?
2.3 million.
No, I don't think so. I think in many ways, people kind of know what it is. It was 41%. If they followed it back then, if somebody's got a question, yeah, it was it costs the total project cost us about about 5 million, 200, and the school building authority funded about 41% of the other part.
Okay, so we've listed two out of the three dollar components here. We've said the total amount.
We've only listed one.
No, we listed two. We listed the total amount of seven, six, five, one, or at least what's in here now. The roofs were completed and closed out. It says here the final cost to the town was 5.2. So you're taking that part out?
I'm taking, yeah, I'm taking that out. So the only dollar amount, again, it says the amount of $7 million, and then it goes on. Because The Massachusetts School Building Authority Funded A Portion Of The Project With A Grant, The Town Did Not Need To Borrow The Total Amount. This is rescind that unneeded amount. So I asked, what was the amount? Then we can tell you about 2 million. Most people don't care about the details when you're at town meeting. It's like, how much was it? And they don't want to know to the penny. They want to know, was it $100 or was it $10 million? I think anybody left a question because hopefully we know the answer because we've been through this.
Marshall, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I like those other two numbers in there. I mean, the only number you're putting out there is $7 million. You don't think people will want to know, well, how much how much did you actually spend?
But this stuff was all discussed through previous town meetings. And if you if you try to put that in there, you've got to come up with the amount that MSBA provided. And and it's about a.
No, I don't don't think so. The final.
I actually tried to get a hold of Steve to find the details, and they weren't available. So I think this is much cleaner to not try to put a lot of stuff in there. You don't even have to put the 7 million in there.
I guess you don't need to put the 7 million in there. If you put 7 million in there, I think you need the other numbers. You keep saying, well, if you were here for previous town meetings, but I'm on a road where I've been here exactly five in one day and there are 15 families who've been here and here less time than me. So we weren't all here for this town meeting. And when it comes to monies spent on some schools, people want to know.
Kevin, we have an exact dollar amount, don't we, that was unissued? We borrowed, we had to borrow or put out for a certain dollar amount, and there must be an amount, an exact amount that's unissued. We must know those. Yeah, I would put them in there. I like them. I think it shows that we did our due diligence in trying to get grants to help lower that cost. And now we don't have to borrow too.
But you have to then explain.
I wouldn't explain exactly what NVSA gave. I would just say that was the final cost to the town, and that's in unissued debt. It could be that the the project ran under a little, good. And it could be because of the grant. But the bottom line is 2.3 million has to go back, and it only cost the town 5.2.
I mean, I mean, simplest terms, in 2018, you told told people, again, simple terms, you told told, oh, this is going to cost you 7.6 million. Now we're telling you it costs you 5.2 million. Therefore, 2.39 is is coming back. You don't need anything more in there.
Actually, we never told the people it's going to cost $7 million.
But we had to get approval to go to bid.
We told them that the total project would be this much, and that SBAB would provide us with 40, about 41%, which would be this, and our total cost will be about 5,200. That's what we told them, and that's what we all went in on. It was fine. It was, it made sense. But, okay, the issue that we had here before with the with the other languages, it raised the question as to, boy, did we save a lot of money on this school project? You know, that that was a really good project. We really overestimated it, didn't we? No, we didn't overestimate it. It was, as a matter of fact, we we did right up to the final amounts plus.
I personally, I like this this because it's a nice recap for anyone who doesn't know the numbers. And it doesn't say, to your point, Dick, I think it was rewritten well. It doesn't say, oh, we saved 2.3.
Okay, okay.
I like it. I don't know. What, how did the rest of you feel?
Go back. The only thing I would ask then is maybe just change the first sentence to read a little bit easier. At the the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Approved The Debt For Replacement, because there's like replacement in there a couple of times or something.
Can you send that to Kevin? Can you send that to Kevin?
Yeah, I'll send it to Kevin.
The beginning?
First sentence. The other stuff, leave it as it was.
Everyone okay with that?
Leave it like it is.
The one tweak that Dick's going to give, just to make that first sentence a little smoother.
Um, just for what it's worth, I just received a response from Meredith Shaw over at the Tri-Town Council. Middleton granted a 5% increase in fiscal '21 and Boxford a 5% increase in '22. The 5% is based on the annual contribution, which is different for all three towns. Not in the office, they don't have all the data. TTC initiated a request for 5% increase for the reasons detailed in my previous email. That's what I read to you folks earlier. The request was asked for our fiscal '21s was a previous request. They did ask in fiscal '21. I do remember that as well. And because of COVID.
That'd be great. Just forward it.
My personal take on, since every town has given an additional 5%, I'm fine with putting in that new number, Kevin, of 21, 525, and telling the town everybody gave an increase of 5% and we haven't given one since 2016. But I don't know how the rest feels.
Next.
I'm all for that as well, and we know from experience that this is going to be talked about about a meeting. So we'll be able to talk about it at town meeting.
Okay.
I agree. That's good. Let's do it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Kevin. All right, so you're going to send over the Article 36, that small change at the beginning of the sentence. Moving on to 37, OPEB, any?
So there was, we, this is the existing language we've used now since I've been here and years prior. I know Mr. Gant had made some modifications. He's welcome to speak to it in regards to how the language. in regards to how the language is used. I didn't change it because it's, it's a very standard language you use in the past. And I wanted to make sure, again, like I said at the top, something like this, I wanted to make sure the entire board had a chance to discuss before accepting or, or not. So I don't know, Mr. Gant, if you want to talk about the changes you were looking at.
Yeah, yeah, this has been around for a long time. It's, it's fine. It's kind of like a, a repeat where we talk about the article that originally put it in. I think it's one of those things where, as Marshall would say, the less words, the better if possible. And so that was why I made the suggestions that I made.
You're actually putting in words though, Dick, right? You're further explaining. As you say, until funding reaches $500,000 and then you added, after which the funding amount will remain at $500,000 annually until the trust is fully funded.
Oh, yes. I was just trying to explain that it would stop, but we'd keep, it would stop when you get to $500,000. I'm sorry, I don't have that wording in front of me. But I thought I took out this article, 23rd May, what, didn't I take that out? Maybe not.
You took out what part?
I'm sorry, I just don't have the stuff in front of me. It's.
The, Mr. Gansley.
Oh, I, I understand. Yeah, 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 yeah.
The article allows the.
Got it, got it, got it.
This article allows the town to continue to fund the, its OPEB liability by this depositing funds, sorry, my eyes are, depositing funds in the OPEB trust. The town's financial policies recommend increasing the funding amount by 20,000 each year until the annual funding amount reaches 500,000, after which the funding amount will remain at 500,000 annually until the trust is fully funded. OPEB liabilities relate primarily to funding healthcare for retirees. That's the suggested language I received from Mr. Gant.
Yeah, and so I, I did clean it up in the beginning there. I took out all of that stuff about, you know, creating the thing from 12 years ago and such as that. So that's why it does start out with the article allows the town to continue to fund. But I thought it was valuable to try to explain that once we hit 500,000, we would continue, it would, it would, the increases in amounts would, would stop and we would go on at 500,000 until we reached full funding. That's what I was trying to explain there.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. It lets you know what happens after you reach 500,000 because then it kind of leaves you hanging.
Can everybody see that language? I didn't realize it was, how you did it. It's in the note.
Yeah.
Okay, is it okay? Then we can go with it then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to move that in? I'll delete the existing language then. I'll make this publication. Just bear with me for one second. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next one, 38. It looks like Dick is just suggesting we put in the word "only" in one location. Anyone have a concern with putting in the word "only"?
And the, the, the only reason, sorry, the only reason I, I highlighted it, you know, I, I don't, when I read it, inferred like it was something substandard or, you know, it's less than what would it necessarily be expected. Maybe that's the intent, but that's just what I, when I read it.
If it's confusing, if it's confusing, don't do it. I thought it was clarifying. If it's confusing, don't do it.
I just thought it might raise questions. Would you stay only like, well, what's it compared to? Why is it, it's less than something else in, in presume, presumption? My presumption would be if I read it, but.
The only relates to 20, to two thirds, right? This is only a majority vote versus a two thirds vote.
Correct. Right. And that's where the only comes in, but that's why I just, I didn't want to just create value to it in that sense. But it's fine if we, if we want it, that's, the language is fine. I just wanted to point that out. That's all.
We do without it. I, I think it reads fine. Everything requires a majority vote at town meeting except for the two thirds vote and we have to highlight that. Everything else requires a majority vote, so. I don't think it's necessary, but I'm not going to die on this hill. It's only an only.
Nor am I. All right, that's fine. And that's the same thing for Article 39. And I would note that I did increase the, the highlighted on the OPEB to 360 instead of the 340, which was last year's number. It's, I'm still highlighting until the FinCom signs off on that, but that should be the final number. And, and same with the other stabilization account contributions based on our finance, financial policies.
Okay, so then we're on to free cash. We don't know that amount until the end. And you changed the polling. Does it look like here? Polls will be open from 7 o'clock in the morning. Okay, we just took out the, from 7 o'clock in the morning, oh, the placement of 7 a.m.
The placement, yeah.
Okay.
Somehow, somehow they get screwed up from the past.
Okay.
So I would ask that we just for our own purposes, put a comment against and questions. So in case, in case we don't have questions, we take it out. So however you want to do that, just, you want to, maybe want to comment it for your own purposes.
What, what are you talking about, Dick?
Dick, where is that?
I'm sorry, I'm into the, I'm, I'm into the warrant here, into the election warrant. Right, right there. The next, the end of that, the end of that paragraph says, following offices and questions.
Okay, and what do you want to do with that?
I just want to highlight, if you would highlight and questions in case we don't do questions.
There are, right now, there are no, no questions.
That's true, but I would leave the wording in there because there may be.
I'm just highlighting what you're talking, Dick. You're saying right now there are no questions. Therefore, if there remain no questions, means we may.
I just want to remember to take it out in case.
Yeah, yeah.
In the event there are no questions.
Okay.
And then in the, in the list of, of positions, it says select board members. That got put in there la, last year for this, for some reason. Yeah, I guess it went, what happened is it went from select men to select board members. And you notice, of course, in all the others, you don't say planning board member, trustee. Just select members, okay? Okay. And that's it. That's all that I have.
Kevin, you're feeling good about this, aren't you?
I'm so good right now. We had some great progress. I'm going to, I'm going to wait. I made notes. I've got about a dozen plus little comments. I'll wait for some of the language from Madam Chair and Member Gant and I will incorporate that as soon as I have it. It sounds like you might already, so if you want to send it over tomorrow, your earliest convenience, I'll, I'll plug it in. We have snow coming on Friday. I typically come in, so I'll probably be here Friday. We might not be opening up our doors depending on severity. We're expecting up to 14 inches now, Thursday night into Friday. So we will see how that works, but I'll be here. So it might be quiet and I'll be able to hammer out some of the final changes before resubmitting to everybody. I'm planning to take version three. I'm going to submit it back to select board by Monday. It could be tomorrow, it could be Friday, like I said, depending on all the preparation I get by Monday night and also send it to KP as well. And I will send it to the FinCom as a full version change, so they can get an updated version of it. And I also make modifications at this point of the article numbers and clean that up. And also, beyond that, update the, the index or the, the, the first page that lists all of the, the articles and have that reconcile with the, with the document itself.
Okay, and then the next time we get together.
I'm not sure you want to renumber the articles yet.
You want me to hold off? I can hold off. It's fine.
Because, because sometimes people remember them that way.
I can hold. It's fine.
I think you should hold it off because you're going to, it's just more work for you and it's, it's going to change around. We, we can have some blank ones in there.
As long as everyone's good with that, that's fine with me. And I'll, it'll probably be version four, then we'll make those updates in, in a week or week and a half time, whenever that is.
That's my suggestion.
That's not a bad idea right at the moment because some of us have those numbers in our brain. And if you change the numbers now, it looks different and feels different.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the next, next time we get together is the 16th. So we get the version from you, Kevin, and we get together on the 16th. So we should be able to make some good headway going through those final changes and then starting to vote to accept them for inclusion. Will we have the STM for the 16th?
Yeah, I'll make sure we have that for 16th. Absolutely. I'll try to work on the STM. I might even be able to get it for Monday when I distribute the version three of the ATM. At, at the very least, we'll might push it one more version and have it the following week. Is it make set? So I'm going to make these modifications. I'm, I'm going to update this, like I said, and send this out by Monday as far along as I can and go along with it. If there's anything when you review it, obviously, I don't think we need to get back to a meeting between now and then necessarily. But if anyone sees anything, if you want on the version three, point 01, please just email me back and say, Kev, either you missed this or I had some second thoughts on that and I'll incorporate it. I think at this point, we're, we're pretty good place and we can tweak some small things if needed without necessarily getting back together. But if there's overwhelming desire to get back together because some things are changing, we've got the Masco warrants coming in, et cetera. We can certainly, Madam Chair, if you'd like, try to, if we need to do a special between now and then too, we could certainly try. I know that there is, for Mr. Brown, I know you mentioned there's some, some timing constraints, but for what it's worth, I, I, I mentioned that. But we can work via emails, my point, that at this point, if the board's comfortable with that.
Good.
Sounds good, Kevin.
We should, we should be at the point, in my opinion, where we, where we can make, make simple changes like you're talking about without changing the, the the, the drift of what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, right.
Sounds good. Okay, anything else before we move on to executive session? Okay, thank you, Kevin, so much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Good job, Kevin.
Take it in motion, please.
No, apparently not.
Anybody? Bueller, Bueller?
I, Kevin. By roll call vote, we enter into closed executive session in accordance with MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 20.